Okay, we'll call this meeting in order April the 19th, 2019, Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chelka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Little.
Here. Would you please join us in a moment of silence? Okay, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to item one, a gender received, disapproved or amended.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Today, we have a recognition of the Waterloo Warriors Hockey Team, 2019 varsity champions Waterloo Warriors. Coach, you want to come up here for a second, receive the plaque, and then we'll have you talk a little bit. Craig is our spokesperson for hockey, so why don't you come up here?
Okay.
Maybe you can go to the podium there and kind of tell us a little bit, and then we'll introduce the players. We'll bring them right up front so they can get on TV.
Sure. Thank you for having us. We had a very successful year this year with the Warrior organization. Our JV team actually finished second in the league and then second in the tournament. Our varsity team finished first in the league, which is only the fifth time that the Warriors have done that in approximately 45 years of the Iowa High School or Midwest Hockey League. We also won our eighth championship, or second in three years. Many of the players here were on both teams, and winning it two in three years has only been done once before in the Warrior organization, and that was approximately 35 years ago. So, this group of players had a very successful year. We also went on to represent Waterloo, Blackhawk County, and Iowa at the Nationals in Cleveland, Ohio, and we were undefeated in pool play and then unfortunately lost in the quarterfinals to the eventual champions from Colorado in a hard-fought 3-2 loss. So, but I was nothing but proud of the boys, the way they represented the state of Iowa there at the Nationals, and very proud of them, of all their accomplishments this year. And we look forward to being back here next year with another championship. So again, thank you for having us, and what we'll do is we'll have the boys, you want them to come up front here?
Sure. What were the other coaches to us? There's at least three other coaches.
They are not here. Mark Herbst was one of our assistant kind of coaches where he worked with the dry land off ice, but we also had Todd Birch, Mike Wurches, and then Bo Cook, who happens to be my son, helped out with us all year, so.
Okay, yeah, why don't we just bring them up and we'll catch their names, and then we'll get a picture of them.
Okay. Let's have names, age, and what school you go to.
There you go. Just kind of line up in front of the podium there, and we can get everybody in there, kind of squeezed together. Okay, let's just start right here. Why don't you give your name and what school you go to?
J.A.P. Smith, and I'm a sophomore at Westside.
Right. Outer.
Chris Fox, freshman at Cia.
Chris Webb, junior at Union High School.
Nick Samuelson, senior at West.
Ethan Fox, senior at Independence High School.
Tom McBuchan, sophomore at Westside.
Ben Senate, junior at Columbus High School.
Landen Scoonover, sophomore at Westside.
Mason Lamb, junior at Westside.
Colton Burge, junior at Westside.
G.T. Metcalf, freshman at Cia.
Quite a few schools, it sprays me.
Where's your goalie?
He must be in class right now.
Okay, did you guys want to get pictures? Go ahead. Go ahead, you can come over here. Come on up here if you want to get.
What was your, what was the final record, Coach? Wasn't it, you only lost two games?
Our regular season record was 29, 2, and 1. The one was a shootout loss, and then we were obviously 3-0 in the state tournament.
Okay.
What was the goalies', goals against average, you know?
It was, I believe it was less than one. I believe we played 32 games this year, and I think we only gave up 31 goals, so pretty impressive.
Everybody get their pictures? We got one too? And I'm assuming we're the parents back here, grandparents? Excellent, excellent.
How many will we see back here next year, all but, who won't be back?
We got some young ones. I'll be back. All right. Babies.
Yeah, they usually don't give a winner, Coach.
Yeah, well, you never know, but we got a good group coming back. We had a great, our senior class this year, they were actually the first group that I coached when I was, they were freshmen when it was my first year, and we brought them all the way through, and they've done nothing but shown great leadership, work ethic. Actually, one of our seniors, Captain Carter Herbst, was the tournament MVP. He's not here right now, but, so we're very proud of that aspect, too, so.
Well, we certainly appreciate you bringing and sharing this championship with us here at the County Board of Supervisors, and hope to see you again maybe next year, huh?
Sure. Great.
Okay, thanks a lot, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you've bashed it. Good job.
Thank you very much. Good crowd, really. That's really surprising, different schools.
Yeah, Independence.
I'll learn trouble.
Okay, then, moving on to public comments. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the board at this time? It's not an agenda item. Okay, seeing, now we'll move on to item four, claims and payments, resolution A. Susan.
The county's expenditures this week total $334,086.11.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chelka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to resolution B.
We don't have any claims for contribute this week.
Very good. Okay, moving on to presentations, I think what I'll do first is we'll have C. Lindsey, why don't you come up first? This is promotion of the upcoming household hazardous materials material drop-off electronic recycling event in Blackhawk County. Residents, going to be Saturday, April 13th. I'll let Lindsey go over everything. Morning.
Morning, Lindsey. Morning. And, I can my screen up here. Maybe, there we go.
Yeah, you got her there.
I brought some pretty pictures for you guys today, so you don't have to just listen to me speak. It is that time of year again, spring cleaning time, so if you have old TVs or household toxins that are taking up space in your home, this Saturday, April 13th, is the day to get rid of those here in Blackhawk County. So, this household hazardous materials and electronics recycling event is open to all Blackhawk County residents to bring items from their homes and garages. It is sponsored, co-sponsored by the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission and the City of Waterloo, and then it is coordinated by our two-person Waste Track education team, and we are a partnership between the County Solid Waste Management Commission and the Blackhawk County Conservation Board. So, this event will take place this Saturday at the Waterloo wastewater treatment plant, which is located at 3505 Eastern Avenue in Waterloo. So, at the corner of 218 and Mitchell Avenue, there'll be signs posted from there that residents can follow to get back into the complex to the correct locations. It's 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. There, the complex is gated, and they do, the city does close that gate right away at 2:00, so please try and be to the site before then to be able to get through with your materials. As I mentioned, this is open to Blackhawk County residents only for items from your homes and your garages. It is a free drop-off for the chemical portion of the event, and for the most part, the electronics event is free as well. There are a few fees that may apply for certain electronics. So, it is a drive-through, drop-off style event. We'll have volunteers that will get the items out for residents. They just need to kind of get in line and travel on through. And they take a wide variety of household cleaning chemicals, lawn and garden chemicals, as well as propane tanks, fluorescent light bulbs. There's a whole list of materials that they will take. And then for electronics, for the most part, if it is anything that runs on a battery or you can plug in that's not considered an appliance, they will take that at this event. There are, there is allowed two CRT-containing devices, so if you have an older TV or computer monitor that is, has a cathode ray tube in it, the kind of the thicker-bodied monitors and TVs, you can bring two of those for free, and each additional one after that is $5 apiece, and that just helps to offset the costs of recycling those leaded glass tubes. They're a little bit more expensive than the flat screens and other types of electronics. So, just please, if you do have additional CRT devices, make sure you have exact change with you, and they do accept cash only at this event, and no bills larger than 20s, please. They are not able to accept items from businesses, churches, schools, or nonprofits. This is strictly residential only. A wide variety of things are accepted at no charge, and that would be your flat screen, thinner TV monitor, TVs and monitors, laptops, copiers, printers, game systems, all kinds of different small electronics, as well as lamps and vacuums and bigger items at home as well. We've had people bring treadmills through, some of the electric, different things like that, so. If you're not sure, you can always give our office a call at 266-8722. You'll get myself or my coworker, Tammy Turner, we can kind of help you figure out for sure what you have and if it would be accepted at the event. There is a complete list of accepted and not accepted items listed on the Solid Waste Management Commission's website, so that's wastetrack.org, and if you go to wastetrack.org and backslash spring-dash-drop-off-event, that will take you to the page within the site that has that full listing of all those materials, as well as the location and the map and those things as well. Or, once again, give us a call, we can help you figure that out as well. This event is run on volunteers, so we'll have 60 volunteers that'll be on hand helping with directing traffic, serving participants, and then as well as unloading all of those materials for people, too. Last fall, at the event in Cedar Falls, they unloaded almost 25 tons of electronics from 813 vehicles during that five-hour event, so they filled 96 pallets with e-waste and then a semi-load of hazardous materials that were kept out of the landfill as well. And we do want to thank these volunteers ahead of time. We're very grateful to have them, this event would not happen without them. So, here's a few pictures from the beginning of the event last year, couple of TVs coming in at the beginning, and then the big pile at the end. You can kind of see my coworker and our intern at the time, they're kind of hidden amongst the electronics in the pile there as well, too. So, we just want to thank the volunteers and the participants who helped to keep all of these materials from entering the Blackhawk County landfill. Just a few reminder notes, all loads coming to the event need to be covered, whether it's enclosed in a vehicle or tied down and tarped with all areas, and this is a City of Waterloo ordinance, so as folks will be bringing those various materials through the city to get to the site, they need to make sure they're following the City of Waterloo ordinances on the way there. This event does not accept appliances, so appliances such as, we get a lot of questions about microwaves and air conditioners, dehumidifiers, those types of things this time of year. Those are not accepted at this event, but you can contact your city waste management department, or the Cedar Falls Transfer Station, or the Blackhawk County landfill can take appliances for residents. They're also not able to accept paint of any kind, residents just need to dry that out, and then they can throw it away, and there are tips on our website on how to do that as well. They cannot accept alkaline, single-use, double-A, triple-A type batteries. The DNR does not consider those hazardous, and so they can just go right in the regular trash. They're not able to accept ammunition, you need to contact the Sheriff's Department if you have any of that. Some of the automotive motor oils and filters and antifreeze's, you can contact a local service station, or your auto part dealer store, or the Cedar Falls Transfer Station takes oil as well. Fire extinguishers are not accepted, and smoke detectors are not accepted either. For fire extinguishers, they can contact the local hazmat center or scrap metal company, and for smoke alarms, the Iowa DNR recommends that you look on the back of it, and there should be some mail-back instructions on there through the company. And they're not able to accept tires, lawn mowers, weed eaters, grills, carpet, mattresses, those types of items either, so you can contact your city as far as some of the bulk item policy or cleanup days, or tires can be taken to the Cedar Falls Transfer Station or the Blackhawk County landfill. And for some of the mowers and weed eaters and grills and things like that that are metal, they can contact a local scrap metal company or contact their city as far as their bulk item days, too, so. We do have a list of kind of all of those things on our wastetrack.org/faq page on the website, and so people, if they have one of those items, they don't have to remember it all, I just said, they can kind of go there and it'll kind of give them all of those instructions for them as well. And just a reminder, they are not able to accept business, church, school, or nonprofit waste at this event. Just to recap, the, this Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM, the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission will have their household hazardous materials and electronics recycling event. Follow the signs from Highway 218 to Mitchell Avenue. There'll be a couple of turns to kind of get you back into the site, and there are a few buildings back at the back of the wastewater plant where we'll have people drive through, and volunteers will get those items out for them. People with questions may call 266-8722, or visit wastetrack.org for more information. Any questions?
Okay, has anybody got any questions? Are those, are they all hard surface roads going down there with all the weather we're going to have this week?
They are. So, yeah, you kind of go, if you're familiar with where the City of Waterloo used to have their yard waste drop-off, they no longer have it back there, they've moved that site, but it's kind of that same set of roads, so it is all paved, and then just depending, I don't know, it might be kind of dusty, just because you are kind of going back through a facility, but they are hard service, not gravel.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and Chris, I'm assuming we'll do yours at a later date?
Yes, we'll table that till next week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have the Blackhawk County Health Department Annual Report. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Mephisee Bonier, Blackhawk County Health Department. I'm sorry, my voice is a little raspy, but I wanted to go over the annual report in front of you, that's for fiscal year 18, and also give the Board of Supervisors an update on where we are currently and how we're preparing for fiscal year 20. So, exciting stuff for fiscal year 18 occurred. As you can see on the first page, we did some immunizations with the, with the school districts due to the passing of the Menachalko vaccine requirement during the 2016 Iowa legislative sessions, so that was a very good event. We collaborated with Covenant Clinic. They provided a mobile unit, and we organized and did some vaccinations throughout the schools, both for Waterloo and Cedar Falls school districts. In addition, we, we continued to restructure and to ensure that our processes are effective, and so that, that has really been very rewarding in a sense where we, we now are starting to be very intentional as it relates to the essential services of public health. Last year, we did also a workforce development survey. This was in collaboration with the University of Iowa. So, right now, what we're, where we're at is we're working to develop that workforce development plan. Our survey was for the entire Health Department staff, and basically, it was asking staff, what are their training needs, where do they feel they, they need more support, more professional development, and so it was exciting to get their feedback, and we're working on a plan to develop our workforce development plan and training needs to understand better what we need and our competencies that we need to achieve. Lastly, we, we ended the year with being awarded $125,000 from the Kresge Foundation, and this is to strengthen our role as an innovator in public health. It's called the Emerging Leaders in Public Health, so this has been an exciting award for us because it gives us the flexibility of leadership development and also creating a strategic plan for the, for the community as it relates to health equity. So, any questions in regards to the annual report?
Okay, anybody else?
I was going to ask you a question about the Kresge grant.
Yes.
As far as the implementation and the steps in that.
Yes. So, just in additional information, what we decided to do with the Kresge grant is look at how can we address health equity and equity-related issues. Back in November, there is a couple of articles that came out that stated that the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area is the worst place for African-Americans, and it created positive and negative feelings, and I think there's really momentum right now in terms of addressing some of these issues, and I think the Health Department is really a key leader in, in talking about these disparities and why they are these disparities, and how we can implement solutions. So, we've actually, with our Kresge funds, hired two consulting entities that have done this kind of work with counties. One is engaging inquiry, and what they do is, it's called systems thinking approach, right? So, they help us build a map, a county-wide map, in terms of identifying where our resources are, where are some of the barriers, and, and so it gives our, the county and also our partners a more strategic understanding of, okay, wow, why are there resources here and not here, and what can we do effectively to do that? We also hired human impact partners who, what their, their work is to, to help communities understand social justice. What does social justice means to a diverse community, to a community that is growing, and how can we address some of these issues, these barriers that other communities are feeling? So, it's, it's very exciting, it's innovative. I think that we're really, this is the ideal time to do this type of work, and as a Health Department, I, I, my goal is for us to be a resource for the community, a resource as it relates to equity. So, when, for example, we're having, we're, we're talking about issues of transportation, I want the transportation organizations to say, okay, the Health Department needs to be at the table, because we had, in terms of equity, in terms of addressing obesity, walkability, the Health Department is key in, in contributing to that kind of discussion. So, it's, it's very exciting, but one of the things that is very important is that the internal team, our staff, needs to understand it first, so the work starts internally first, and I'm working with the University of Iowa to implement a health equity curriculum within the Health Department. So, what they'll do is kind of have a baseline assessment of, of where we are, what is our understanding of health from the administrative team, from program managers, so that we have a common understanding internally, so that we can be that resource for the community. So, this is exciting, it's exciting work. It's not easy, but I think, I think we're, we're trying to be more systemic in addressing these issues. Any additional questions in regards to Kresge? Hi.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not, I'm not finished.
Oh.
Sorry, yeah, sorry. I'm not finished. We, we have applied for public health accreditation, and so we, we pay the invoice, which means that our clock is going to start ticking pretty soon, so I, anytime you see a staff member at the Health Department, just motivate, encourage them. It's, it's going to be a very tough upcoming year for us in terms of document collection, addressing some of our gaps. So, our two coordinators will be going to the training in Virginia in May, and once they come, our clock starts, and they give us until the following year, May 2020, to submit everything. Our Board of Health is very encouraged. So, one last thing, the Board of Health did approve for an additional capital expense, not to exceed $26,000. I wanted to just give the Board of Supervisors that courtesy of, and that takes the $26,000, it's for, it's for sports utility vehicle. Last year, the Board of Supervisors approved one for us, and we have additional funds in our budget. It's been working very well. It's for our, it's for Blackhawk County, and it's for a rural county for the environmental health unit, so we needed an additional one, because there's two people that do this work, and with all the weather, it's, it's becoming critical that we get that additional vehicle.
So, those money's are in your FY19 budget?
Yes, it's, it's, it's in our FY19 budget. Lastly, the, in, I've given this additional one pager of our county health rankings, I encourage you all to take the time to look at our data, and basically, it's telling us where we are in terms of our county health rankings as it relates to the state of Iowa. So, for our health outcomes, Blackhawk County is ranked 61 out of 99. We can do better. Health factors and health behaviors were 72, so that's some of the areas where the, the Health Department, we really need to work on, doing some of that prevention work and getting the community to really understand public health and health behaviors that are important to health outcomes. Excuse me, for clinical care, we are 18, so that's not, that's okay, which it explains it with the two major hospitals that are here, and, but for social and economic factors, we rank 89 out of 99. So, this explains the article that you, that was published in, in November, in terms of just education, poverty, crime, those are some of the factors that are also contributing to our health outcomes. And then physical environment, again, we can do better, we are ranked 72 out of 99. So, just, just take some time to, to, to look at that when you, when you get a chance, but other than that, thank you for supporting us and encouraging us and, and helping us with our budget. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again. Okay. So, moving on to item six is receiving project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I just wanted to give you an update on the road conditions, and it may be a little bit more lengthy this morning than I have in the past few weeks. The gravel roads are still in very poor condition. Leversee Road in particular is in very, very poor condition. We are out there as we can be. We have been receiving a lot of complaints from people who live on gravel roads, of course, they need to come and go, they need to get to work, their kids need to get to work. We do understand that. In some cases, there's just not a lot we can do. We, if we try to haul in rock, sometimes, depending on the condition of the road, our own equipment may get stuck. We may get stuck up to the axles, and then we have to send our resources to haul out that equipment, so we have had numerous complaints for us to just come and play some rock. Much of the rock continues to disappear until the road firms up. There's just so much moisture in the subgrade in many of these roads. The conditions for the next three days, we don't expect them to improve, we're anticipating several more days of rain to begin this afternoon. We have thought about embargowing roads, seal-coated roads, for example, but historically, this county, we have not embargoed county roads. We have, we've closed gravel roads on, when they're flooded, but again, it's very limited number of roads that we're closing. Some of our seal coats are seeing some damage, for example, Waters Road in particular, that's one that historically every year gets flooded, so that flooded, it was underwater for several weeks, plus it's also had its share of frost boils. We, we do have a seal coat contract. You probably recall that we did let that, we did award that, we are anticipating we may have to make some changes to that contract. We don't know yet what those changes will be, we're waiting for several more weeks to see what, what the condition of the roads will be. We need, we may need to reshuffle some of those, those more badly damaged seal coat roads and come back and do those this year, and maybe defer. And maybe defer some of the other roads that are in that contract. I'll keep you posted on that, but I just wanted to give the public a word on that, because we may have to reprioritize our seal code of routes as well. And then, lastly, dust control permits. If the public wants to have dust control on the gravel roads this summer, we, we need them to contact a vendor. Typically, the deadline is April 15th. We're probably gonna be a little late getting our roads ready for dust control this year, so people still need to contact their vendor, and then the vendor gives us a list of which roads to repair. So, can I answer any questions at this time?
Do you extend that date this year?
We, the newspaper said April 15th. We're always usually good about accepting people, even into May. We just like to have everybody call in, so that we can prepare the roads at one, at one time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Effie Saye Boigny, Blackhawk County Health Department. We have the Community Health Survey that is going, that has been out. I will be sending it to department heads. Please do have your staff also take the survey if you haven't. I encourage the Board of Supervisors also to take the survey. I will be sending it out this week. We also are translating the survey in French, Bosnian, and some African dialects, Wahili and Lingala, Burmese, so that we can capture the key, also immigrant and refugee communities for our Community Health Needs Assessment. So, please do take the survey, it's very important that you take it as a community member. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kathy, you are done?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then, I guess, moving on to minutes approved for April the 2nd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item made is a consent agenda that'll be made with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please. Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item 9, this is a report, motion at the Recorder's Report, a fees collected from Sandy L. Smith, County Recorder, for the period of February 1, 2019 through February 28, 2019, be received.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy, anything on the end? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item 10 is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution contract between Blackhawk County and Blacktop Service in Bold, Iowa. It's for, project got a seal coat for FY20 for $165,821.50, start date July 1st. Kathy, wanna talk a little bit about this one?
Yeah, this is that contract I was just referring to. We, we may need to do some readjustments in the contract and shuffle our seal-coated road program around, just to minimize the damage that we're seeing. We may need to increase it a little bit, but I will, we'll keep you posted as, as the spring.
Is any language there you want changed?
No, no, we, I'd like for you to approve the contract, and then we'll make changes as necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Board, any questions? Roll call, please. Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, Item B is a resolution contract between Blackhawk County and Iowa Plain Signing. Slater, Iowa, for FY19 payment markings, $90,142.24.
Second.
Kathy, anything on this one?
No, just approving this, the annual payment markings contract.
Okay. Roll call, please. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, Item C is a resolution of lowest reasonable bid from ATech Freeman Security, Millennium Services Software Upgrade with a bid of $17,938.70 be approved, assigned to contract. Rory, you wanna talk about this one?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giveng, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning.
This is our Millennium System. This is essentially our key FOB system for the Blackhawk County Jail, the Courthouse, and Pinecrest Facility. The original system was put into service back in 2007. We've been operating off of that same software since that time. This is a budgeted item. There's a few of the primary reasons that we're looking at upgrading the software is, one, we're being told that it's no longer being serviced, which we hear that a lot with our different programs. But even more importantly, for the project coming up over at the Pinecrest Facility, we're looking at adding an additional 10 FOB systems throughout that facility. With this software, that will allow us to integrate fire control in those systems that we're putting in over at Pinecrest, as well as elevator control, which are key factors for that building, given the location that we're looking at putting these key FOBS. We're looking at putting these new FOBS on the wing doors of that facility. So, this program will, again, allow us to integrate shelter-in-place operations and help us isolate the lower level of that facility, so.
This one time fee?
Yes, it is.
How long was the previous software in existence?
Since 2007.
You mentioned earlier too, Rory, I think that there was just the one bidder on this, is that?
Yeah, there was one bidder, and it's actually the, the company that we're currently working with. It's the company that we worked with when we purchased the system back in 2007. We did reach out to one local company to see if they would be interested in becoming a dealer for the Millennium System, but due to the, the financial investment in order to become a dealer, they chose not to, so. And we also put this out on our BitSite website as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Roll call, please. Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, Item D is a resolution, change order one received from HTS Architects, Warren, Iowa, for additional floor preparation. This is for the Pinecrest restroom, amount of $662.56. Rory?
Yes, this is for both the men's and women's restroom. Just to go back to how that's written in our agenda, we have Pinecrest restroom removed. That should actually state Pinecrest restroom remodel, so if that correction could be made. This is due to the removal of the existing VCT tile in both of those restrooms. They found some mosaic tile underneath that. Due to the removal of that, consequently, some of the concrete floor had come up with that. And so, in order to give us a nice, flat surface for the new flooring, they need to provide a skim coat on that, so that's what this is for.
Okay. Board, any other questions? Do you have a motion on this one?
No. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item 11, other business. This is a motion at the appointment of Rebecca Bulver as Deputy Recorder. This is a replacement to fill the vacancy left by Jane Gharley. Be approved effective April the 7th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy, you wanna say anything? Reintroduce.
Good morning, Board. Sandy Smith, County Recorder. As difficult as it was to say goodbye to my previous deputy, I am very excited to have Becky Bulver on staff. She's a great, great asset for Blackhawk County. She started about seven years ago at Country View, and she's been in our office for about five years. And she has stepped up and really, especially the last year and a half, with everything that we have had going on, just really, anything I needed her to do, she was willing to do, so very happy to have her, very lucky.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the new position. Okay, is there anything else, Board? Did we have a motion on that? Yes. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a motion that the appointment of Rodney Lewis is representative for the Board of Supervisors on the Blackhawk County Compensation Board, effective April 9.
So moved.
Okay, any questions on this one?
Rodney's a local businessperson, very involved in our community, and I brought him forward and encouraged him to apply, and I thought he'd be a good fit for the Compensation Board.
Very good. Okay, is there anybody else?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Item C is a motion, Personnel Rec for Administrative Aid Position. This is full-time in the County Recorder's Office, be approved or recommended by Sandy L. Smith, County Recorder.
So moved.
Second.
This is like a backfill, Sandy.
This would be filling Becky's job, and I expect it to be filled from within.
Sure. Okay, Board, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item D is a motion at the travel request submitted by Kim Veder. IT Director be approved. This is for $575.08 to attend ICIT mid-year conference in West Des Moines.
So moved.
Second.
This is for two nights, three nights?
Two nights.
Two nights.
Yeah. This is our annual conference. Yes, I will be there with our hands-on demo site, and then we all cyber security sessions, so it's a really good conference.
Okay. Board, any other things? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E is a resolution of suspension requested by Reinhardt Kimball on taxes owed for 2019-2020 installments in amount of $906. This is pursuant to Code 427.8, the Code of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Read anything? Okay, I think we saw a memo on that or something. Okay, roll call, please. White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item F is a resolution of Finance Director being directed transfer appropriations to the various budgets for FY19 for the offices submitted and shown upon the record.
So moved.
Second.
Susan, anything?
Yes, this is just, our District Court Administration budget is about $12,000 annually. We're required to pay for things like interpreter expenses, court-appointed guardianship. We just had a couple of unusually large bills, so we need to transfer $10,000. We're transferring that from the Board Agency budget, where we have some funds left over in our Department of Corrections contract.
I think the Board saw that memo last week. Okay, is there anything else? Roll call, please. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, Item C, this is a motion to authorize Director Chair's sign for the FY20 Iowa Department of Transportation secondary road budget and their five-year construction plan.
So moved.
So, we get a chance to hear from Kathy for the second time today. Maybe.
So, good morning again, Board. I've given you a handout of this PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to go through all the slides. I think it's more important that I just spend a couple minutes talking about what the five-year plan is and the importance of it, particularly considering some of the phone calls we've gotten in the last several weeks. About that we do, we are strategically thinking about the roads in Blackhawk County. Every year, the Code of Iowa requires that we give you a report of what we're going to do for the next five years. We, of course, receive money, a lot of money, through the Road Use Tax Fund, which is what people pay when they're, when they're purchasing fuel. So, this comes to us in an allocation. We receive federal money for, for our bridges, and we have to be looking at our bridge inspection reports, we look at the condition of our roads, and we do strategically think about which roads we are going to be working on for the next five, five to six years. We then have to prepare this report every, every year, the next five years. With your permission, we do, with your approval and permission, we submit it to the Iowa DOT, along with the budget for that coming year. So, we are thinking all the time, constantly, about what roads we will be working on. It is very difficult for us to decide in April that we want to resurface a road in July. We, we just can't do that. We need to design roads, we need to have said where we are going to spend the money for the future, to be in accordance with state law. But nevertheless, I put this PowerPoint together to, to show you primarily for your reference throughout the year of what roads we're going to be working on for the next five years. I included the 2019 projects, so these are the road projects that we will be constructing this construction season. They've already been let by the DOT, you've already approved the contracts, and there's Cedar Wopsey Road from Highway 63 to 218. The Raymond Road overpass area, we're gonna be taking out all that bad concrete and replacing it with asphalt. And then, we'll be resurfacing about four miles of Marquee Road, and this is in conjunction with Bremer County as well, since it's a county line road. And then, of course, our bridge projects for this fiscal year, we're, we're going to start construction of our large Cedar River, our replacement bridge on Cedar Wopsey Road. And that has started, it's gotten a bit of a slow start, just due to the high water. And then, we will also have our bridge crew construct two replacement bridges on Carter Road and Washburn Road. So, you see, the next five years, I won't go through every year, but you do have the list right in front of you. We're including road projects, we're including our larger bridges that we will be receiving Federal aid for, as well as some of our smaller, as well as all of our smaller bridges. For example, in 2020, we're replacing a small bridge on Bennington Road. And we're primarily gathering this information from our bridge inspections that we are doing on a two-year cycle. So, I won't go through all my slides, but you have a reference then for the future. And that reference will be available on our website in the very near future.
Could you also send that to us, Lieutenant?
Yes, I will do that, and I'll make sure that Chris, since he's not here, I'll make sure that he gets that as well. So, here's just a summary of our five-year plan, that we're, we're going to be spending $22 million. That's what we're anticipating coming in the next five years. This is how we will spend all of our sources of funding for the next five years. I did want to take just a few minutes to talk about two, two roads in particular, Grundy Road, and then a bridge, actually, East Bennington Road Bridge. So, Grundy Road, as you recall, is, is a county line road that we share with Grundy County. It's a very heavily trafficked gravel road. The portion that we are anticipating upgrading is, begins at Highway 20, and it goes five miles to the south. There are numerous hog confinements on that, that route. It is a through route for people to get to Highway 20, because there is an interchange there. Right now, that portion of, of Grundy Road, that first mile to the north, is the heaviest trafficked gravel road in, in Blackhawk County. By maintenance agreement with Grundy County, we take care of that, those five miles. It's our largest annual expense for maintenance. We typically have been spending in the last, in the last three years, for sure, $30,000 to $40,000 a year on rock, just for that road. We're re-rocking, re-rocking that road at least twice a year, and that's, that's unheard of. We don't, that's the only road we do that for. As soon as we place that rock down, we get complaints that we need to re-rock it again at certain times of the year. So, it just tends to eat the rock, it seems like, but hence, our desire to improve that road. So, where we are in that process is, we are, the Blackhawk County, we've agreed to do all, all the design of that roadway. We are well into the design of that roadway now. We've done much of the surveying now, we're starting on the design, we're making good progress on that. We would, we need to begin right away acquisitions for that road in the near future. We're hoping that we would start those acquisitions in June. And the reason we need to do these acquisitions so far ahead of time, because construction is not until... so far ahead of time, because construction is not until, work would not start until May of two thousand and twenty, is we need to acquire the right-of-way and then we need to have the utility companies move the power poles. Much of this roadway corridor has power poles on it. They are there on our right-of-way. We will now have a ditch or a road, depending on where it is, where those power poles are. So those need to be relocated at the utility company's expense, but they need time to do the engineering of how to reconfigure the poles, and then they need the time to actually go out with them. So if we can start this acquisition process this summer, by the fall, we can have purchase the right-of-way. We can tell the utility companies that, here's the right-of-way. You're free to start the engineering and then the moving next spring. We anticipate letting this project in December of two thousand and twenty, and then work would start in May of two thousand and twenty. Because we, we are, we are about to anticipate going into an expensive portion of this project, where we acquire right-of-way. The right-of-way costs will probably exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the Blackhawk County side, probably similar amounts or more for Grundy County. Before we make that big investment, we would like to hold a public meeting to get assurances from both boards of supervisors that this is what the boards want us to do. There's been, we're hearing different discussions from different board members in Grundy County that perhaps this isn't what they would like to do, this project. So before we commit to this, before they commit to it, we'd like to have the public speak, and then you, you would hear that, and we would be given further guidance on, this is what the boards desire us to do. So we are, we're looking for a place to have that meeting. We're hoping that May will be, will work out for people. I know that's a really busy, can be a very busy month. We're thinking about perhaps the church on the, the road itself, or there's Saint Gabriel's Church further to the south that we're also looking at, or perhaps Dyke City Hall. So we're trying to find a location in May near the corridor, and we'll keep you posted because we invite all of you, as well as Grundy County residents and their board of supervisors, to attend that meeting. Cathy, will that be a joint meeting, or for the most part, it'll be Blackhawk County kind of doing the? We're anticipating it would be a joint meeting so that you all can hear the comments from everyone. So however we have to do that, it has to be a formal, public. So their staff will be involved as well? Yes, we're, we're talking to Grundy County right now about where to hold the meeting and what time can work for everybody. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. So after that public meeting in May, anticipated, would that would be a timeline, you said, that works for you? How soon would you need to make a decision to move forward? So for us to move forward with right-of-way, June, commitment in June would be, would be really ideal for us. Okay. But again, it's your decision, so we, we'll gather the facts and present you with the information. The timeline you indicated, though, June would be good. That would be very good for us, then we can begin the acquisition process as soon as possible then. Thank you. So then the other bridge that I wanted to talk about was the East Bennington Road Bridge, and you probably recall this bridge. It was damaged by a utility contractor's truck and trailer, that it was damaged in September of two thousand and seventeen. Several months later, we did receive a, a one hundred thousand dollar settlement from the utility contractor's insurance company. We have just placed that in the bank. We are, we would like to move forward with putting it in the five-year plan, once we've decided what to do with it. We've received an estimate to demolish it for eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars, so that, that would be within that one hundred thousand dollars that we received from the insurance settlement. We would like to hold a public meeting in September of this year to invite you all, as well as the residents, so that we can hear what thoughts are. We would like to close the road, but if there's, or, excuse me, we would like to demolish the bridge with no plans to replace the bridge. So we would like to have you approve that, but we also, I also feel that the public should, you should need to hear their opinion as well before we can move forward with that. And then, once we've made a decision on what to do, then we can place that. Next year, we could amend the five-year plan to place this, this item in the five-year plan then. So can I answer any questions about the plan as well? I would ask that you approve it so we can submit it to the DOT.
Okay, then. Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
We already have a motion.
We got a motion in a second.
Okay. Is there anything else, anybody? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any reports or information from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.